Please rise and join me in the presence of. Sorry, I remember earlier. Moving to the agenda, agenda item two, adoption of the agenda. Motion by Mr. Hanson, Sir. And Mr. Solomon, so any this adjustments, changes or additions? The adoption to the agenda as you received. There are none of those in favor of adopting the agenda, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Post name. Then this adopted. And item three approval of minutes, regular meeting of July eighth, twenty twenty five. So that motion may be seconded to accept the minutes. Are there any discussion, any errors or omissions noted in the minutes? Hearing none. Those in favor, except in minutes, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Post name. Gen item four, public remarks. If there's anyone who would like to make public remarks. So recognize them, please state your name and address and keep your remarks three minutes.
Thank you. Thanks, Mike Rovillo.
You could come to the podium.
My name is Mike Rovillo. I'm resident of East Hampton, seventy six Abbey Road. What I'd like to do this evening is briefly address the town council and town manager concerning the sewer expansion project proposal that has been floated recently. And some specifics pertaining to the letter sent out on July seventh. Basically, it cut right to the chase and I propose that consideration be immediately stopped for this until complete and useful information is developed. Especially concerning local government's possible placement of an effective mean of forty thousand dollars, of an effective. The affected homeowners. There's a lot of deficiencies in this communication from the seventh. One of the primary ones is it does not even contain the information that's contained in the town council packet. That was sent out from the last meeting. I think that's leaves us open to a lot of questions of obtusation, hiding information, right? And it's far too general. Um, the the myriad deficiencies in here, you know, they range from the owner's cost impact not being really investigated or displayed to the people. And also, there's no quantitative problem statement on here. What is the problem trying to solve? It looks like it's just an expansion. Grab for revenue for the waste treatment plan. I provided two letters to the town council, to Mr. D. Solomon and Mr. Cox with initial specific issues. That have to be clearly addressed before any project like this is considered any further. Or even especially before we engage in any discussion about costs and funding. So it just doesn't appear that adequate planning has been done at this time. It just seems there's not enough background here to go forward with this. Now, there may be some more information elsewhere. If there is, that really needs to be shared in detail with everyone. I have also spoken with Mr. D. Simone. I had a very good conversation with him. However, we weren't able to answer really any of my questions. So really, a specific full and detailed cost impact to each property has to be had before we go forward with a proposal like this. It's not just the forty thousand dollars that's being burdened on the citizens. It's also any further cost that come from that contingencies, different engineering work that's needed for each site connection to the system, and then site specific property work. Also, any generalized justifications that are in these communications, they need to be backed up, spelled out with data in detail. Okay, we can't just make general statements. So I I do question the quality of this letter that that was released, you know, especially because that June tenth town council packet information was not included here. And that is all very broad estimates. It's in that pack. Um, statements concerning money, you know, saved by simultaneously paving, you know, to to point something out specifically. Well, that has nothing to do with savings. All of this is, it talks about money being spent. Cost avoidance, perhaps, we want to get down to terminology, but there is definitely. Um, you know, nothing in there that saves anybody any. The other thing is there's no quantitative benefit. Uh, as a result of this, that's been stated. I see no quantitative benefit. So in conclusion. You know, I respectfully ask that this incomplete analysis be terminated immediately and that if any further analysis is pushed forward. That appropriate detailed consideration towards the impacted citizens, you know, be considered. Um, this includes a total life cycle cost and details affecting each property.
Mr. Rovillo, I thank you for giving us the writing of your requests for information.
Yes, I have.
We'll take that under.
Okay.
Considerate certainly and pass that along through our town manager to Mr. D. Simone.
Okay, thank you for your attention.
Thank you. Thank you. Is there anyone else who would care to make public comments and remarks at this time?
Yeah, one online.
One online.
Kyle.
Yes, hello. Good evening. My name is Kyle Dosler, fifty six William Drive, East Hampton, Connecticut. Uh, my comments tonight are regarding item eight B on the agenda regarding the extension agreement for eleven Skinner Street. Um, in my opinion, this is a financially unsound and costly property for East Hampton taxpayers. Uh, to to purchase at several different levels. Uh, the first is escalating costs. The purchase price has increased from two point three million dollars to two point five after renegotiation. But with additional fees and potential penalties after that. Um, the extension fees taxpayers will be paying are nonrefundable. And don't reduce the purchase price. The town is seeking another two month extension which require additional fees, and it's questionable if the town can bring this to a referendum within that time. There are known environmental risks associated with the property which has a history of environmental issues requiring remediation. And if the town purchases this property, the environmental liabilities shift to the town after closing, which could be even more costly to taxpayers. Also, the building has been historically been noted as being in a floodplain. Municipal buildings and floodplains require extensive flood insurance. And if the purchase is approved by voters, aside from the overall shocking sticker price and construction costs that range anywhere from ten million to eighteen million dollars or more. The town may be forced to pay an additional hundred thousand dollar penalty for each fire station if the town decides not to sell them. Overall, the deal structure, the contract heavily favors the seller. With the town bearing most of most risks while paying escalating fees for the privilege of extended negotiations. And are timed to bring the town purchase of this property to some type of town vote. With budgets as they are and the increasing difficulty of getting them passed. I think it's best to discontinue the current proposed agreement and for the town to cut its losses while it can. Before any further extensions are required to schedule a vote by the town. I urge the town council to vote against this extension and explore more fiscally responsible alternatives that better serve East Hampton taxpayers. Thank you.
Is there anyone else who care to make public remarks or comments at this time? If not, we'll move along. Agenda item five, presentations. By day, lake update from conservation lake commission. Mr. Yankner.
Evening. I've also got Jay Hartland here. Jay is the vice chair of the Lake Commission. I got a brief statement I'd prepared and then opened up the questions. From the council. Uh, bottom line, lake is having a difficult year. It's not as bad as it was five years ago, but it's greener than we'd like to see it. Uh, and it's also a bit of a regression compared to last year. Basically, the facts. Uh, the key measurements and indicators that we monitor on a regular basis are the algae count levels, the phosphorus counts. And then we do second this, which is visibility. Monitor. Some are done weekly, some are done bi-monthly. But we have a steady stream of this data coming in, and this is the data that we use to determine what actions we need to take. Regarding whether it's treatment plans or whatever. Um, algae is definitely blooming in the lake. It's not toxic now according to the health department, but with the high counts, there is a possibility that we could get it toxic. The lake is open to swimming under your own risk advisory. Um, the health department has not seen fit to require the closing of Sears Park. I've been to the lake all afternoon this afternoon with my grandchildren, so seem fine. The, uh, our strategy basically has been to regarding the algae in the blooms and toxicity. Has been to control and reduce and eliminate phosphorus as much as possible. Because phosphorus is the feed, is the food for algae. It's, we feel it's better trying to eliminate the base cause of the problem rather than continuing to do Band-Aid treatments. They don't really solve the problem. They just, they're Band-Aid. So if we can reduce, but if we continue to reduce the phosphorus, it, the algae follows with a decline to much lower levels. Frankly, we're unsure as to why the phosphorus has increased so much this year. This is all art. It's not science. We're. Factors including weather, the heat we've had, the runoff we've had from the hard rainstorm, what rain we've had has been hard, which is actually the worst kind. That it gets runoff and increases that in the lake. Those are things that are impacting it. There's one X factor that's new to us, and that's the Bill and Hydrola. We don't know what the impact of the or the treatment of it is on the, uh, we don't know what the impact of Hydrola itself is on the legal ecosystem. Nor do we really know the total impact of the of the treatment. Some of the experts, the folks who are doing the application are like lymphologists and whatever. Are postulating, you know, the host, the Hydrola grew like hell last year, and that absorbed phosphorus to grow. Uh, now we're killing it. It's, they killed itself. So is that releasing the phosphorus that they had last year back in the lake? Maybe. I don't have any proof. Uh, nobody seems to have any proof of that, but that seems like a reasonable deduction. So that's a difficult situation. Uh, we're executing our lake management plan that we submitted to the town in the in the spring, which includes the bio blast. It's a product that reduces phosphorus. We've been using that ever since the irrigation system went in. There wasn't upgrade done this year, so that rather than having a boat. Riding around the lake, dropping it in, it's now fed into the lake through the iteration system. Which saves us some money, number one. Number two, it evens out the dosage. To the lake. It's, we're able to control the dosage more exactly. And hopefully that makes the whole, the usage of that material more effective. Um, this year, we're also going to be using an aluminum oxide. Or I'm sorry, aluminum chloride or meta flock treatment. You may recall, well, we've done meta flock the last couple of years. Uh, the first year we did it, and then basically that's a product that takes the phosphorus, binds it up and prevents it from being in the water column for the algae to feed on. The first year we used it, we had outstanding results. Within a week, we really cleared the lake. The second time we used it, there was some improvement, but it wasn't the exact, the outstanding results we got the first time. So this time we're adjusting the dosage. Got the experts tell us that all right, that we want to tweak the dosage. And we hope to have that done in the next week or so. To treat the lake for the rest of the summer. Uh, the whole up on it is the delivery of a material itself. So we're trying to get that shipped in and get it, uh, get it distributed. We explored getting that delivered through the iteration system also. But John Tucci, whoever blew the run the iteration system, says he's never done it before. It's not been tested. Uh, he doesn't know what that would affect due for the dosages or anything. So. It's something to explore for the future, but we don't think we can do it this time. It's going to have to be a drop in the lake. Uh, this does not require, since we're using it for lake clarification purposes, it's not required, a permit is not required for the DDP. Where we notify them and tell them what's going on, but we don't have to have a permit. Uh, we're continuing with our programs to identify watershed improvements that will reduce phosphorus runoff. And the education program, the Lake Spark program, we have to encourage homeowners to take steps to reduce phosphorus runoff. I'd like to open up now the questions. I'm sure some of you have had some calls from residents wanting to know what's going on. So hopefully this will help you speak intelligently.
I guess I have one question. I I thought we were going to, but we did.
Oh, we did. Yeah, yeah.
I had that question quite a few different times and it seems to be, and of course on social media. I saw what they're treating it with.
Is that what it was? So, so there, I've tried to take point the Lake Commission on the social media piece. So there, there is a treatment plan for Hydrola for the Connecticut River run by the U.S. Army Corps of Engineers. Uh, one of the chemicals that they talked about was DiQuat, which is what exploded over social media with a lot of information there. Um, our treatment plan, which we started working on last year, and Dave and and your support was with sonar, which is a, uh, much less toxic. Uh, and more appropriate application for our lake and a contained lake. Um, you know, the U.S. Army Corps of Engineers, part of that partnership is sharing data and information. And also potentially hopefully getting some federal funding to continue our treatment plan if it's shown to be effective against the hydro.
I thought that. Army Corps of Engineers staff is also.
So there's some funding questions on what they're doing on the Connecticut River. Um, all I can speak to is that there's no action nor any permit being pulled for DiQuat to be used in Lake Oak. Um, and then I, you know, I hope, I mean, there's a great renewed interest in the health of the Salmon River, the Connecticut River, of course, our beloved lake. It would be hopeful that people would also take that same interest in reducing the uses of. On the chemicals and fertilizers that they're putting on their lawns that's draining into the. The lake each and every year that we're battling out on the backend. So we'll continue our education for us to try to get people to to recognize the, the work they can help us do. Along with cleaning and drying their boats, brought Hydrola, both the Connecticut River and eventually to our.
One of the things that's key difference in the Army Corps is struggling with is treating the Connecticut River, which is a moving, falling water body. Is a way different operation than treating a contained lake. I mean, we don't have turnover. River running through it. So the dosages, how they do it, when they do it, is a lot of different factors. Our treatment was done, uh, about mid-June.
First part of June.
First part of June, which they had recommended it, the Hydrola dies off naturally in the cold weather. Which is why we lowered the lake as much as we did last fall to try and get as much exposure. Uh, and we did catch a break and then it was a fairly good winter. We got a solid lake freeze. So I think that damaged the Hydrola anyway. But then for the treatment, basically, the most effective is they wanted to put it on when it first starts growing. So that's why it was done mid-June when the buds were going, and it does appear to be effective. They had told us look for. On the end of the plants, the plants are spirally, I think, and if it done, if that the treatment is done, the end of it will be white, which killed the growing. End of it. And the few buds I've seen floating on the lake have had like ends up, so.
But this year is scheduled pre-treatment. Uh, with the sonar, the first was in June, second one was the second weekend, July, I want to say it's posted around the lake. And then a third will be mid, late August for this cycle. And then we'll continue to monitor it. This is, this is a multi-year effort.
I don't want to disagree with you, Jay, but I think that third treatment, as I understand it, actually hits before the end of this month.
Yeah. They did some notice of the.
Just thought the public knew the last treatment is before the end of this month.
Yeah.
For the Hydrola. Remember, there's no restrictions with that. Just don't water your lawn for obvious reasons, um, from the lake.
Thank you.
Do you have any other questions? Thank you very much.
I have a quick question. Have you folks been getting much input from people or questions or? Has it been relatively quiet?
I think we had the same state of questions that you got sort of in the middle of the month and when that whole.
Okay.
Army Corps of Business pop.
Don't be afraid to direct them to Lake Commission. You know, if they have questions, they won't worry. And our meetings are of course opens and they can attend the meeting in public. All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
Your frankets. Yeah.
Moving on to the agenda, agenda item six, bids and contracts.
You have none of these.
Gen item seven, resolutions, ordinances, policies and proclamations.
Also none of these.
And item eight, continued business, A, subcommittee reports and updates. Have any?
Uh, the plan of conservation and development is having their neighborhood meetings going on. The first one was last night. There was another one that started six o'clock tonight. Those are posted on the town website for the date for all of those. We tried to create a lot of dates, spread them out so that everybody can get to one of those meetings. It's not necessary to attend more than one, just one meeting to get your input in is great. And please take a look at that list and come to a meeting because we want to hear what your thoughts are on the future development of the town.
Thank you. Is there anyone else?
Our mission is reading right now. As well, for sure, with about. This series of the.
Any other? Reports? Moving on. Gen item eight D, discussion and possible action, extension agreement for eleven Skinner Street. Cox, would you like to address that?
Sure. Uh, thank you. This is, uh, and I am coming back to the council related to, uh, an additional extension of time for the. Consideration of eleven Skinner Street. Obviously, that's been the topic of discussion, uh, for the community for a little bit now. Uh, the proposed purpose of the acquisition would be to renovate the building into a fire station. Uh, the fundamentals of that agreement are similar to the previous agreement we had. It basically is a payment of ten thousand dollars a month. Uh, for the additional two months that the council has requested, uh, so that there would be time to, um. To take, undertake a few other actions related to, to the project. If I could, I would like to just take a couple of minutes to just sort of describe some of the activities that have been going on. I think there's been. Uh, some concern as the council has heard about, uh, about the timing, the extensions. Environmental issues, the flood issues, et cetera, et cetera. And I kind of wanted to tell you a little bit about what's been going on, uh, really on this project. Uh, for the time that we've been involved. It really, the discussion about firehouses, as many of you know, goes back pretty far, probably twelve or so years. Uh, to when the the community undertook some evaluations of the fire department. Uh, as an organization, and that included some commentary about the buildings. Uh, we then had a, a building, a facilities committee rather, that worked for the town. Uh, a group of residents who evaluated our facilities and made some reports and among other things. Uh, identified a need for either major renovations or replacements for fire stations one and two. Which are the fire station in the village center and the fire station out in Cobalt. Um, fast forward ten years or so, twelve years or so, uh, the town has done this building and the police station, which were also identified on that list from the facilities committee. Uh, and, uh. We, the council, has received a request from the fire chief in November of twenty two. Uh, Fire Chief Volker at the time, uh, to begin to move ahead on, uh, doing something to to replace the fire stations one and two. Uh, so that we would be prepared for the future. So the town council, uh, decided at that time to establish a committee to start looking at locations. But prior to the time that that committee really got going, uh, the opportunity for eleven Skinner Street presented itself. Uh, and the town, uh, at that time, the council at that time decided to pursue it. We weren't successful, as you all know, in acquiring the property, uh, before it exchanged hands and now, uh, and we are here at this point. Town council continued to think there was interest in that property for renovation purposes. Excuse me, renovation purposes, uh, and directed that we attempt to acquire the property. This council agreed with that, uh, and we continue to move forward on an attempt to get a purchase and sale agreement for the property, which we did in May of last year. Since that time, we've undertaken quite a bit of activity. Um, we did in-house review using some of the folks from our own Brownfields renovation or rehabilitation committee of the environmental information that the new owner had acquired. Uh, the information that they had developed about the needs of the property for environmental remediation. Uh, we undertook appraisals of the properties, not only the, the eleven Skinner Street property, but the two properties that the council might, uh, decide to sell or the community might decide to sell. The two other fire stations, uh, and we reviewed the whole project potential, uh, with the planning and zoning commission at a high level, uh, to get their approval. For continuing forward. Uh, in November is, I think some folks remember, in November, we came to an agreement on the price of the properties, which was a direct result of the. Uh, of the appraisals. Uh, so those figures were determined by outside professionals. Uh, the agreement was that, uh, that would be an average of the two appraisals that we received for both the properties being purchased and the property being sold. After that point, we identif, we hired the town's, uh. Licensed environmental professionals, that firm that we've been using with the Brownfields Agency for the work in the village center. We hired them on a separate project to undertake review of the eleven Skinner Street property and determine, um, what had been done by the current owner. And what might yet be, need to be done, uh, for the, this project should we go forward. Uh, at this point, they've identified that a great deal of the work has been done in terms of remediation. And the items that are left, uh, we have a budgetary figure, uh, of about two hundred and fifty thousand dollars to address that, and that would be included. Uh, in project costs. One of the fundamental differences that we have here is that, uh, the property could be renovated, rehabilitated or remediated by the current owner. To what I'll refer to as a commercial standard, and we, if we were going to resident, uh, if we were going to house firefighters there. Remediate to a higher level. And so some of what we've talked about is how we would remediate to the higher level. Nonetheless, uh, that takes time and, uh, that work, uh, extended into, uh, the first part of this year. Similarly, we hired an architect to assist us with developing the plan for the building so that we could go to the community and talk with, uh, intelligence about what we thought it would cost. Uh, to undertake the project. I think it was important for the council from the beginning. To be able to communicate with the community, not only on how much does it cost to buy the property, but what's really the price for rehabilitating the property and turning it into the product that we want. Uh, here's where we get into sticker shock. Um, in April of this year, just as the agreement that we had, uh, with the owner was about to expire. Uh, in April, we got those prices together. We've got an understanding of what it might likely cost, and as you'll remember, I stood here at this space. And said to you, it could be about eighteen million dollars, uh, with construction, with the property acquisition and the financing cost. Uh, clearly, the council decided that that was not acceptable at this point. Uh, and we began a discussion of, um, are there alternatives? And ultimately, the community or the council rather, uh, asked for the extension that it received to consider options for, uh, moving forward. Decisions were made about postponing really what it came down to part of the project. Uh, acquiring the building and postponing part of the project. Uh, to help bring the price into something that we thought we needed now and forestall. Improvements that would be needed at some point, but weren't needed right now. That eighteen million dollar figure, by the way, uh, is important to keep in mind because the estimated cost for building a building from scratch, which is why we're considering acquiring an existing building. Constructing from scratch is about twenty five million. Um, notwithstanding land costs, but it's about twenty five million dollars to build a fire station to the same. And not even to the same size as eleven Skinner Street, smaller than eleven Skinner Street, but to a standard that would, uh, serve the community into the future. So anyway, the council decided that was not the right number. Uh, we acquired a little bit more time from the developer or from the owner rather of the building. Uh, and, uh, undertook efforts with the fire department, fire commission and the architect to see what we could do, as I mentioned before. Uh, I stand in front of you now. We know that the, the estimated cost of that, uh, revised project, including the acquisition of the property. Uh, the construction that I talked about, uh, and financing costs is ten to eleven million dollars, so considerably better. uh, and financing costs is ten to eleven million dollars. So considerably better. Not a great number. We know it's still a big number. Um, but uh, I think the in the intent of the community of the council is to allow the community to consider that. To consider a final plan, to have time to at least hear what those that information is uh, and make a decision uh, sometime later in uh, sometime in the early fall. So that's the point of the of where we are today. That's the point of asking for a little bit more time. Now that we know the picture better. We know what the project might be. We have an opportunity to really talk with the community about what are the shortcomings of our and the environmental issues of our existing buildings? And how are they resolved by moving to the new building? And how would financial package work? Some of you recall from the budget discussions that our uh, debt service calendar is in uh, in a downward trajectory right now. So we have an opportunity to, if you will, replace some debt uh, and keep those costs um, at least a little bit more reasonable. So but we want to be able to have time to work that out and explain that to the community and allow it to make a decision. Um, so that's the point of the extension. I wanted to just take a couple of moments and describe sort of how we got to where we are. Uh, the intent over the next couple of weeks, if the council should choose to go ahead uh, and approve the extension would be to uh, as I said, at with the lead of the fire commission and the fire department, uh, explain to the community how we're moving forward and explain to the community uh, the issues we're trying to address. Uh, with, as I said, a goal at the near the end of that timeframe of two months. Public information meeting here, uh, followed by a vote of some sort, either at a meeting or in a referendum. Happy to answer any questions, but that's uh, those are my comments related to this site.
Uh, what were the tentative dates?
As so the council has talked a little bit about uh, the potentials, the potential future dates. Uh, and we would final, uh, the intent would be to finalize this part of it on the twelfth, if you choose to move forward. Um, the twelfth of August, that is. So the goal was to have um, a town meeting on the ninth of September. That should be a Tuesday. Uh, followed by, uh, you discussed having a referendum uh, question in front of the community on the sixteenth of September.
Just a a question and you may not even have the answer. Rather than a full day referendum from six in the morning to late at night, it's possible to do a referendum to the public noon to eight or five.
Um. That's an interesting question. I uh, I I have to look. I'm not sure. Uh, I, the there is a a narrow window defined by the state statutes and we always expand it. But it's not quite that narrow, I don't think.
I I seem to recall years ago, we had referendums that were half-day.
Mm-hmm.
Folks.
I we, I can certainly look into that.
What's the advantage? We're having a lot of referendums of late, just a cost factor. But I don't think you know the product button. I mean that. Negative.
I think the negative perception that you're trying to get to different people not may not necessarily be able to come when they're just becoming from six to eight. And I think that's.
Well, you don't have to make that choice right now. We can look in and you can know the answer when you come back to this particular question later, if you do.
What's the cost of a referendum to the town?
Four thousand fifty dollars.
Around four thousand dollars depending. The the, I think the copy was sent to the council, but the council member hints asked that question earlier and this last one the cost about four thousand fifty dollars.
Any other questions? Question?
Um, David, I've asked this quite often. How much have we spent so far on the extension and how much of that actually goes towards the cost of any?
So um, the extension to get us to the end of July uh, had three components to it. May was no charge.
Yep.
June was uh, ten thousand dollars, which would be credited to the price if we purchased. And ten thousand dollars for July that would be kept by the property owner regardless. So we have spent twenty thousand to date. And of which we could get back if we actually do the deal. The proposal is to get two more months, another twenty thousand.
Thank you. I need to clear it up some before. When you've done that. Twenty thousand that was not going to be able to be done.
If if we make this extension, I'd like the council to commit to those dates. If we could. I mean, I mean, I I think we need to.
That is the message that I have been giving. Uh, when I have spoken with the fire commission and the fire department, that's the message I've been given. I would say clearly that was the message I received from the council when we have spoken on this topic.
So before we did the extension, maybe we should make a a motion to amend the agenda to add a nine C to set a referendum uh, at a town meeting and referendum date. For the firehouse if we're going to, if the contract is extended.
I'll set the amendment.
Motion received and seconded. Is there any discussion? Now, those in favor of amendment? Superb, I say aye.
Aye.
Most of them.
Yeah.
We just voted on.
We'd like the motion to give the extension agreement for two more months to get us to September thirty.
Mr. Hens. Motion. Did you make the motion?
Yes. All right.
Motion been, has been made and seconded. Is there any discussion?
I'm just going to say that I can't support this extension because it is solely meant for the purpose of educating the town. And after twenty-two months, I feel like the town education should have been done already. And I can't in good conscience spend taxpayer dollars on something that we should have completed that now. That's not saying I don't support the firehouse, but I do not support this extension.
What I think, what Karen says. Why it's taken twenty-two months and where some of the polls for, you know, some were were the 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 drops in have been. And you can't take it out of the taxpayer out to not get the information just because it's taking long and gather the information. Um, that it need to.
When the council met with the fire department in March, I told them they needed to start a public relations campaign and they did not.
They had didn't even have anything, any uh, still recently. Um, they've had no schematic or pricing for it.
But they did at least have information on why a new fire department is necessary. And even now, the public has not heard why a fire, the new fire department is necessary. I feel that a lot of this information should have been publicized already.
That's been being publicized since twenty thirteen when we J L under reported him.
Comments, questions?
I echo um, Karen's sentiments on this. Uh, I I mean, going back to November twenty-two, I think when the exploratory committee was formed. Uh, this facility has been on the, on the uh, horizon and there's been no planning until the last the eleven o'clock hour for this and we keep paying for extensions. And I I just don't see this as a responsible use of taxpayer resources. Uh, particularly when we know that the us are going to be really difficult to get through in a, in the current budget situation. Uh, I don't, I don't see this as as responsible for us to continue paying to extend uh, this multi-year uh, contract.
Comments, any official comments? Now we have motion made an amendment. And to those in favor of the motion as amended. Oh.
Or the amendment?
Oh, the amendment was.
Correct. That was, we were going on that. No, we're on the extension agreement. There there's no amendment to the extension agreement.
No. Those in favor of the extension agreement? They signify by say.
Aye.
Pose nay?
Nay.
Five and two. I think uh, David, we we need to make it very clear that this information needs to get out to the public very quickly. And that we can't dawdle anymore. Now that it's been us stalling.
Uh, pass that on. I suspect your uh, action at nine C will help punctuate that decision. Punctuate that statement really.
Uh, Dave, could you restate those dates so that we can make a motion on that?
Uh, when the time comes, yes. Uh, so the council has talked about doing uh, the a town meeting um, uh, which in the discussion was a town, was a uh, a town meeting opportunity for an information session is effectively uh, last sort of a last uh, opportunity to ask questions on September nine. Um, that is a council meeting night, so you could do it at six and start the council after that was over. Uh, and then uh, the referendum would be on uh, a week later on September sixteen.
Jack? Yeah, I moved to set um.
Boy, we're not that hard on your order.
You added that to nine C. I I apologize. I I hope the chairman out here, you added that as a nine C, so you're not quite there yet.
Oh, nine C.
Yes. Not an eight C.
Um, okay.
The words were nine C.
Yeah, because it wasn't continued business.
Right.
Right. Yes, it's, it would be a new item, yes. Without arguing, it's.
I'm sure everybody knew it was nine C. It's been continuing for quite a while.
I'll get the uh, agreement uh, signed and we'll uh, act accordingly.
Right. Moving on to agenda item nine, new business A discussion and possible action regarding modification to cemetery fees in the twenty twenty-five, twenty twenty-six. Schedule of fees and charges.
Uh, on behalf of the um, cemetery board, I'm going to bring forward to the council two I, or three items rather for change to the schedule of fees. Uh, and I'll apologize, uh, this item was sort of left off of, off the list when I presented this to the uh, council back uh, earlier this year in June. Um, so the cemetery board has requested that the cost for purchase of new plots uh, in the town cemetery. And I'll remind the community and the council that we have a few spaces available today uh, and primarily in our Young Street Cemetery. Uh, and there is a property that we do own behind that uh, that is available for the town to develop should it desire to do so uh, for additional cemetery space. But regardless, the cemetery uh, board has proposed uh, an increase uh, in the fee to a thousand dollars for plots. Uh, that's about, that's a five hundred dollar increase. Uh, they've also uh, uh, requested to and have proposed a fee of a thousand dollars uh, to facilitate the opening of a full grave site, which is a four hundred dollar increase. Uh, and they have proposed the addition of a new fee or that would honor uh, openings for cremains, which are of course cremated remains, and they take a smaller space uh, of uh, five hundred dollars uh, for facilitating that work.
So what are they currently charging for cremains? Nothing?
There is, there is no differentiated fee for cremains. So the only charge we would have is the cost of a regular room. Which currently is six.
Hey, David, uh, how do these fees relate to the other, some of the cemeteries like Lakeview or St. Patrick's?
Lots of you, that's what they're back.
Yeah, they, the the cemetery board, I'll echo that. The cemetery board uh, did look at what the other uh, cemeteries in town were charging as well as uh, I think they looked at some out of town, but primarily in town and found that these were comparable to what other cemeteries were charging.
Dude, could you just uh, remind us what the town cemetery is?
Oh, you're going to test my memory?
Yeah.
Uh, we have five. Uh, most of them are historic and and don't have any current uh, active burials going on. Um, uh, so I mentioned Young Street. Uh, we have Skinnerville, which is on Skerr. Um, we have um, uh, we have, oh, good lord, we have down in uh, Middle Hattam, south of Middle Hattam. We have uh, a cemetery down in the south part of Middle Hattam. We have uh, wish Matt were here. I'm missing two.
Not Tarsha, is it?
Tarsha, thank you, Tarsha. All right, altogether now, what's the third, fourth, fifth one?
You're talking the one down by Earth Park, right?
That's so, that's the, that's the one I mentioned, south of Middle Hattam.
Say that one?
Yeah. Middle Hattam, Tarsha. Is Young Street the one, the only one with openings?
If I understand it, yes, Young Street is the only one with with openings.
Okay, that's the only reason I had asked for the list, just to figure out how many are left in in fact, in the cemeteries.
I do not know how many total um, totally, oh, White Birch. Nope, that's, that's private. That's private. I'm sorry. Uh, so let's see, Southern Year I mentioned, oh, Hog Hill. Hog Hill.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
Should remember Hog Hill. That's where they've done some uh, stone restorations there.
Yes.
Okay. Thanks. So anyway, those.
So you said, what was it currently to open the grave site?
Six hundred.
Six hundred dollars.
Is the, is the charge for facilitating the opening of a grave?
I'll make that motion.
The hush was intended for someone to open a project. Not cheap.
So that's the permits, the paperwork, the everything that goes with that activity.
I'll make the motion for the feathers, Steve, do. Cemetery. Motion made and seconded. Establish the new cemetery fees. Any discussion? Now, not entertained if, well, they're signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose nay? There is. Thank you. Agenda item nine B discussion possible action with town manager wage.
So the discussion, are we ready for a motion?
Ready for a motion.
Uh, I make a motion to raise the town manager's salary to an annual gross wage of one hundred sixty-seven thousand nine hundred sixty dollars on the July first, twenty twenty-five.
Your second. Is there any discussion on the motion? In favor of changing the town manager's adjustment for the salary, they signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose nay? Agenda item ten. I don't know. Nine C. Dates of town meeting and referendum.
Jack, you want to make it or?
Yeah, I'll make it. I I moved, I mean, that we set a town meeting um, to discuss the uh, Skinner Street uh, firehouse on September ninth and a referendum uh, for voting on September sixteen. Is there a second?
Second.
Motion's made and seconded. Is there any discussion, thorough discussion?
Are we stipulating that this will be by paper valid?
What's your?
A referendum, it'll be a referendum by paper. It's not a town meeting. This is a referendum.
No, it's a referendum.
Okay, I just want to make sure that's clear from the public.
Other questions or comments? If not, contained more uh, vote, those in favor signify by saying aye. Pose nay? Now we're just agenda item ten.
Uh, thank you. I'll just uh, uh, for the purposes of of keeping my track on what I was going to talk about tonight, I will echo the uh, the comments. I will echo the, the comments made earlier by council member Wana about the. P O C D neighborhood meetings. For those of you that want to catch those dates, they're posted in a variety of places, but I know you want to find them in the town manager's report because that's the best place to find them. And you get a whole bunch of other information with them. So they have one going on right now. There's another one tomorrow night. Or tomorrow afternoon, rather, at the public library and then there's a few more at various locations, Nelson's Campground, one here, Adamant Covenant Church. Princess Foca Park. So they're around town. Feel free to stop in and share your thoughts. Really believe us, we want to know what you have to say. Juliette Hodge, our town planner, is leading that effort and I think that. She has a good process and a good plan and will bring us a document that I think will serve our community well in the future. The other thing I just want to mention is that. Without standing the resident comments earlier this evening. The W P C A is planning to at least have an informational conversation with some of the residents of the community. Here in this room on the thirteenth regarding potential expansions of the sewer system, thirteenth at six o'clock P M here. Did I, what did I say?
You just said thirteen.
I did, right, thirteenth of August. Thirteenth, that'd be, this month is gone, you're right, thirteenth of August. At six o'clock here in the room, just to hear conversations and comments from the, from the community gives the W P C A an opportunity. To, to hear those comments directly and to try and respond to them and make decisions on how it wants to proceed. I would also say that some of those conversations will come up. Not only at neighborhood meetings, but will come up as part of more directed conversations. In the future as the P O C D goes ahead and we talk about utilities and we talk about town expansion and town growth. In general, so share your thoughts and comments on that with the W P C A, should those meetings present themselves. And make it available. The last thing I'll just mention is a reminder that the. The unfortunate tax bill season is upon us and everybody has received their tax bills by now. They're due here by the end of July or the first of August, actually. And after the time they are delinquent, there's a number of opportunities to, to pay them, number of different ways you can pay them. With and without fees, depending on whether you want miles or not. And so I just encourage our community to make sure that they get those things in. We don't need to collect your interest, so. That's all I have. If there are questions, I'll certainly answer them.
On the sewer expansion, does that stop at the council or can the G W P C A expand it without council?
So it's kind of a complicated process. The reality is. Because there's likely a need for borrowing, frankly, the residents get to make the financials. But the W P C A has authority to move ahead within its. Or sewer for certain, it has the authority to move ahead within its means. But I think there will end up being some coordination with the town and the town council because it's likely. That there would need to be a borrowing associated. And that's admittedly part of the mag, just enormous challenge. Not the least of which is, you know, as we all know, talking with the community about a forty thousand in return on their. It's the same conversation we've been having about water for decades. How do we handle that cost?
Further questions, any comments? David, I, I just have one. It was brought up that this, the eleven Skinner property. Flood zone. I would, has there ever been a flood? Because I do not recall anything on that property in my lifetime.
So I can't answer the latter.
Which is pretty extensive, by the way.
Right. I can't answer the latter as to whether there has been actual flooding. I've heard anecdotally comments about the hurricane thirty. And whatever it was, the floods in fifty-eight and all of those things. I've not heard any detailed account of what happened on that property. The landmass that is eleven Skinner Street does have a Zone A flood mapping on it. Okay. It does not, as far as we can tell, impact the building. The building is anywhere from five to ten feet away from. So we have an initial conver, have had an initial conversation with our insurance carrier and they did not express concern. I have asked them just recently to formalize that response. So I have sent them a variety of information and have asked them for in writing in response on what. They would take, what concerns they would have, whether there's a cost associated with that. Just to make sure that we can. With a hundred percent certainty respond to the concern that some of the residents.
My recollection is that that site was originally one of the Mill Ponds.
True. That is a filled site. It was a pond or part of the creek or however you want to describe it in the past.
On the FEMA website, there's a map that shows where the buildings, the residents want to go.
It's, yeah, it's hard to see on the FEMA map because of the scale of the FEMA map, it's a huge section of the town. But what, what usually happens is that the surveyors will take the FEMA map. And the coordinates and the information that they have from that and extrapolate it onto a survey of the flat of the site that they have. When we see that. It's like I said, between five and ten feet away from the corner. So that's the information that I have sent to our insurance carrier to get them, I've asked them, as I said, to give us a form written response. On whether that presents an issue.
Any other questions? Thank you, David.
You're welcome.
And item eleven, appointments. And item twelve, tax refunds.
Chair, I'd like to make a motion to return three hundred and forty dollars and sixty-seven cents and rip off.
What's made and seconded. Is there any question or discussion on the motion? If not, those in favor of. Making the refunds of three hundred and forty dollars and sixty-seven cents, signify by saying hi. And item thirteen, public remarks. One more opportunity. Right ahead. It's Michael.
Yes, Mike Bravillo, seventy-six Abby wrote. Just briefly to add to Mr. Heinz's question or comment about. You know, the funding for the sewer project. One of the things I get my impression talking to everyone here is that, yes. The cost would have to be bonded, okay, which goes to referendum for the whole town because it's bonded. However, the responsibility for payment is only those three hundred and twelve people who are there. That's where the lien comes from. So the whole town. May go in and say, hey, yeah, this is a great idea. Let's extend that sewer. Project. However, the thing that I would ask the town council to be very, very considerate of is. The money for that, it's not, everybody's not paying that on their tax bill. It's only those people paying it. As a formidable need. So I just wanted to make that clear, but that's my impression at this point in time. I think that's something that requires very careful consideration. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for bringing that up.
Further, public remarks, is there anyone hand raised?
Also send this and Sabby wrote, I just wanted to say that I did speak with Mr. Simone and he did acknowledge that. It would be completely, totally the responsibility of the three hundred and sixteen families. Not anyone else in town. And to put that kind of burden on just three hundred and sixteen families. And have the whole town decide. That we're going to be paying it. I just really hope to consider that that's just not. It, it's just not right. I mean, that'd be like when you come and telling you, I'm going to put something on your property. I'm not going to tell you how much it costs. I'm not going to let you use it. I'm not going to let you, you know, I mean, all of that. But you're still going to end up paying it. And it's just wrong. That's my comment, sorry.
Is there anyone else? If not, we'll move on to agenda.
Leonard Johnson's twenty-one long crossing road. Were those three hundred and sixteen residents that cut up forty thousand dollars of the. Or minus, that really takes away their appetite for schools, for fire house. For pu- public water supply. All, all, all of those things. I think this is a financially perfect storm for those people. Thank you.
Anyone else who would like to make remarks or comments at this time? Checking to see if there's any hands waving, people jumping up and down. Thank you. Agenda item fourteen, communications correspondence and announcements. You have. Information for the town. We also have the two attorney opinions regarding the. Charter budget provisions that we listed. Transparency, I guess, for. Public to know what. Is there any other comments? Agenda item fifteen, adjournment.
Make motions to adjourn.